A credit union is run by volunteers. We have a volunteer board of directors where a bank has cooperators and trustees. If you have a $5 member account, then you are basically an owner of the credit union. You have a right to vote at meetings and so on and so forth.
I'm going to call the meeting to order this evening as is standard practice. After elections in the respective towns, the first school committee meeting after those elections is for reorganization purposes before the committee can go forward and conduct business. So as superintendent, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And before I proceed for the election of the officers of the school committee, I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to the school committee meeting for May 20, 2014. First order of business is to recognize our new school committee members. Angela Napton from the town of Spencer, Mike Ethier from the town of East Brookfield, and Heather Messier, not really new but not old. She served with us for a few months, so welcome back to Heather as well. We appreciate you stepping forward and continuing with the work of this school district and we hope you enjoy your time on the regional school committee. With that, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for chairman of the regional school committee at this time.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Cludier.
I nominate Kevin Hayes as chairman of the committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Nordquist seconds. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote, all in favor of Mr. -- I'm sorry, those in favor of Mr. Hayes, starting with Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Nordquist.
Aye.
Mr. Cludier.
Aye.
Mr. Ethier.
Aye.
Mrs. Napton.
Aye.
And Mrs. Messier.
Aye.
Thank you. We have that recorded, Martha? Okay. Does the new chair care to vote? Mr. Hayes?
Vote aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for the support from the board. I look forward to certainly continuing to work in with those members that have been here and to the new members as well. So hopefully we'll be able to beat the challenges that are in front of us in the upcoming year. The next order of business at this point would be for nominations for vice chair. I'll open it up at this time for nominations.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
I nominate Chris King for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion or further nominations for a vice chair? If not, on a roll call vote, Mr. Nordquist.
Aye.
Mr. Cludier.
Aye.
Mr. Ethier.
Aye.
Mrs. Napton.
Aye.
Mr. Messier.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The super-
Chris vote.
Chris?
King. Mr. King. Sure, aye.
Superintendent is our secretary of record, but there should also be a nomination for that as well. So I'd open it up for a nomination for a secretary to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? On a roll call vote, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Nordquist.
Aye.
Mr. Cludier.
Aye.
Mr. Ethier.
Aye.
Mrs. Napton.
Aye.
Mrs. Messier.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that will be the new board for the upcoming year. The next item on the agenda is the proposed meeting calendar for 2014-2015. You've had that in your packet. Is there any questions, concerns, discussion? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Was it past precedence where there would be a couple of meetings in East Brookfield? I noticed they were all scheduled for Wyatt Village.
Yeah, my understanding is yes. I've only been here for shy of a year, but I guess that had happened in the past. There was discussions from the previous board through the course of the year of having one location spot, but that's certainly up to discussion by board members and I would have no problem if you would want to put it to a vote, you know.
Yeah, I've had a couple of people from town approach me on that, those.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further discussion in regards to Mr. Ethier's concern? Heather?
I'm just curious as to why all the meeting times are now at 6 o'clock.
Well, the main purpose for that is we're going to have an awful lot on our plate for the next three, four, or five months, so we're looking at subcommittees, superintendent search, and we're going to be having a lot of executive sessions. This is, I don't have a life, a few other people here don't, so I don't mind staying until 11 o'clock at night, but this was done more out of convenience for members such as yourself and some of the other new members that would like to get out of here before 10 or 11 o'clock at night. But I think it's, for the time being, until we weed our way through a lot of the problems and a lot of the additional meetings that we're going to have, given what's, what just happened recently at the polls, I think we need to, we need to get to work and sooner the better. And I think it's going to be easier to get people to participate and to be able to come and make all the meetings and stuff if we can get them out of here earlier than later. But that's my own position as chair. The board could certainly help vote me on that. If you want me to put it to a vote, I would.
I'm just thinking maybe we could alternate times.
Yeah.
Maybe every other meeting to compromise with members of the community.
What's the feeling of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Nordquist?
I just want to say, would the people speak up a little louder? We have a hard time hearing down here, but that's all I ask.
Okay. Any further discussion on the meeting times? They're scheduled at 6:00. Mrs. Messier is asking that we consider to alternate them. Every other meeting have one at 6:00 and one at 7:00.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
I certainly would prefer 6:00 p.m. We have to be also cognizant of the administration that we're asking to stick around here. Julie and Dr. Malvey and these folks aren't going home after their day and then coming back for a meeting, whether it's at 6:00 or 7:00. And it's just, I think it's a better use of everyone's time. It's certainly a better use of my time, so I would prefer 6:00.
Okay. Anyone else have any feelings or concerns? All right, well then, I think having said that, let's continue, let's continue with this. If we see that it becomes a problem or if it becomes an issue with members not being able to make it that time, then the chair will consider doing something, some alternative. But we'll go forward with 6:00 for the, for the time being. The next item on the agenda. Oh, you want to vote on the meeting schedule? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the, the meeting calendar?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by cred. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cludier. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item, student reports, high school in Knox Trail. Could you come to the mic, please, and give your name?
My name is Maggie Paul. I am the president of the Knox Trail National Junior Honor Society. On Monday, May 12th, an informational meeting with incoming Knox Trail students and their parents was held. Programs, clubs, and activities were discussed with the help of peer leaders and National Junior Honor Society members, offering tours and babysitting. On May 16th, the Knox Trail 7th and 8th grade bands attended the Great East Festival, a band competition in Palmer. A silver medal was awarded. On May 15th, the first round of Knox Trail's 18th Annual Declamation Contest took place. Every student in the school recited a poem under certain criteria in their English classes. The students that were chosen to move on to the next round will participate in the second round of declamation on May 22nd. The final round of the declamation will be held on May 28th at night for the public. The National Junior Honor Society induction will take place on June 2nd. The Knox Trail Band Concert and Art Show will take place on June 4th at 6:30 p.m. The 8th grade field trip to New York City is on June 11th, and the 8th grade graduation will take place on June 17th at 5:30 with a dance afterwards at 7:00 p.m. The grade 6 students will be going to Rocky Hill, Connecticut on May 23rd, where they will learn all about landforms and how our landscape was formed. Knox Trail yearbooks are still on sale for $27 and quantities are limited. On May 17th, Project 351 ambassadors William Demarski and Maggie Paul attended a reunion at Gillette Stadium along with alumni member Trevor Spence and other ambassadors and alumni across the state. 300 students attended this reunion for a day of leadership and uniting. While here, they met with Governor Patrick, Robert Kraft, and Steve Gutowski for mourning of inspirational words and leadership advice. During the day, a unity walk was held in remembrance of Martin Richard and donations were made to his foundation, of which the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District donated Also during this day, students did leadership activities and community service, including packing school supply kits for children, of which over 800 kids will be affected by. Attendees from our school district plan on continuing service and leadership here in our schools and community in the future. We would like to give a special thanks to Mrs. Parlin, who has been volunteering her time and service for the past five years to this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elisia Fagarsky and a freshman at Proudie. Tonight, I only have a very few things to report on. In sports news, baseball and softball has made it to districts, so we're cheering them on. Tonight at 7:00, the Hypnotist, which is the junior class fundraiser, will be there at David Proudie. On the 21st, senior exams will take place. The following day, senior makeup exams will take place. Let me see. Also, we have on the 27th, the Senior Honor Banquet. Today was the seniors' last full day. And on the 29th, at 6:00 in Mechanics Hall, graduation will take place. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is teacher association reports. Mr.?
I have nothing to report this time.
Thank you, Mark. Next item, hearing for visitors. Any visitors wish to be heard? Ma'am, if you would come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Do you want my address also?
I'm the only one speaking, by the way. Hello, my name is Aggie DeGregorio. I have been a teacher at Lake Street School for 30 years. I have worked under Deborah Zablocke for nine years. We are up here tonight in support of our principal, Deborah Zablocke. We were dismayed to learn that her contract was not renewed, and that is why we are here tonight. Mrs. Zablocke has been dedicated to our district for nine years, and we would like to highlight her accomplishment over those nine years. She supports teachers by checking in with them and making daily classroom walkthroughs. She is visible at all times. She is present daily at the students' breakfast, lunch, and at bus duty dismissal. Mrs. Zablocke knows almost all of the Lake Street School students by name. She attends IEP meetings. She has an open door policy and is always available and willing to speak with staff. She consistently holds informative staff meetings. In response to discipline issues, she has been proactive. She created a shining star program to reward students for positive behavior. She has been personally involved with the students during the development of this program. She has developed a positive rapport and strengthened ties with the community through Veterans Day programs, Memorial Day programs, and collaboration with the David Proudie Assisted Living Program. After being away from Lake Street School for one year, Mrs. Zablocke resumed her role as principal without missing a beat. She embraced two-thirds of a new staff with open arms. She also restored morale and structure. We are very concerned and confused that Mrs. Zablocke's contract has been non-renewed when there was no evaluation completed. The purpose of an evaluation is to determine the quality of someone's performance. If there are concerns about the quality of her performance, given all of the positive things that Mrs. Zablocke has done for the district, why hasn't professional development been offered to her? We would also like it to be known that when our district was in crisis last year, Mrs. Zablocke was the one chosen to step in. She transitioned into the superintendent's position with great confidence and ease. She also had an excellent rapport with the state auditors, business managers, and other Department of Education officials. We question how this decision can be best for the district when the DSAC report, which is frequently referenced by this committee, specifically stated that the frequent changes of school-level administrators have disrupted the leadership at the district and school levels, as well as having an absence of continuity and consistency in the school system. Mrs. Zablocke is the most senior administrator in our district. It is also noteworthy that Lake Street School is a Level 2 school under the guidance and leadership of Mrs. Zablocke. Only David Proudie High School has a higher rating. In summary, we strongly ask that you consider renewing her contract so that this district can continue to benefit from her outstanding leadership and knowledge. We question how someone of Mrs. Zablocke's character and accomplishments could be asked to leave when she has done nothing but give 100% to this district and continues to support the education of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? Stevens.
John Stevens, Spencer Select Board, but I, as always, just have to say that I don't speak for the board as I stand here. You know, I can't separate my point of view from, from the fact that I'm a member of the board, also as a voter and taxpayer. And before I forget, Mr. Pepe and I have to leave before you finish. Not out of disrespect to be leaving, but we're trying to start some new open hours to solicit ideas and input from the community. The people have spoken again. Last week, in Spencer, we heard, you know, loud and clear with their defeat of the two overrides and the debt exclusion. I think now we need to show that we heard them. You know, last night, we had a select board meeting and I left a little down. It was a sobering experience beginning to put into place the cuts that we said would occur if we didn't get the override. You know, but, you know, we had, have to do that. And so our budget is set for now. It's a different situation for you folks in the school committee. I know you have a different budgetary process and now, you know, it's, it's back to you to reconsider and then to bring to the towns again. So I just wanted to, not knowing what discussion was going to follow tonight, I just wanted just to say that I just would appeal to you to, is you reconsider the budget and ask you to revisit some of the potential cuts you tabled in the spring and you thought you would get back to if the override were defeated. I would urge you to continue to look for new ways to save and, and also really invite you again to reach out to the, to the towns, to the, to the citizens. I think it would be a welcome image for the community and I, although I can't speak for my board, I'm pretty sure, you know, we would, you know, welcome a chance to, to sit down with you and come up with some creative solutions. It's, it's really all about avoiding where we ended up last year. I don't think any of us want to be back in the, you know, back in the auditorium in the gym at David Proudie, facing our prospect again, let alone the, the idea of the state coming in. I think we, we, we're all staring into a budgetary gulf right, right now and know, and we need people to step in, step into it, and not just public officials, but, but citizens as well. You know, we need some compromise, we need some, some healing, you know, we do need some savings and without taking away from the, you know, from the products and the services we, we all offer in the, in the town and district. So I know you have, you have details to consider, but I would only ask you to, you know, think about what I'm saying and, you know, recall where we were last year at the time. It feels a little too much like deja vu for me, but above all, let's, let's show the people that we, we heard them, you know, last week. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm also a teacher in the district, as you know. In light of that last recent speaker, Mr. Stevens, I would just like to remind you as school committee members, your job is to advocate for the children of the school district, and we need that. We are continuously trying to make do with less than adequate resources, and it's getting very frustrating. And I am really fearful that people don't understand how we're trying to do our job and we're not given what we need. And we need you to advocate for the kids. Please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Is there anyone else that would wish, wish to speak? None? Okay. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 15, 2014. Members have that in your packet. Anybody have any questions or corrections? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. You also have the approval of the minutes of special meetings for May 6th, 2014, unless there's any corrections or discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next item on the agenda, curriculum report. Mr. Superintendent? We continue our work with the DSAC group of the Department of Education, and over the past several weeks, we've had additional professional development work with them district-wide, and most recently, they were out, I believe, on two visits today. They're out to Wyatt Village, and I'm not sure, over the past week or two, where they were. At Knox, Joyce?
No.
No, okay. Okay. So that work continues, and we do expect to have a final wrap-up session with the DSAC team and our administrative team to start our plans for next year. They are leaving the door open to us for the continued professional development work, and we're going to certainly take them up on that offer, as you know, for what we were dealing with this year and the mention made of the DSAC report that came out last fall. We're well into making the corrections based on the recommendations from that report. I've said it before and I'll repeat it, we cannot do it on our own. We do not have the resources for that. So as long as the Department of Education is willing to support us, we're going to be right there in the first row, if you will, seeking their assistance and, and getting our opportunities addressed as quickly as possible. So I want folks to, to know that they're committed to us as we are extending the hand to them to continue this process. We have updated our improvement plan. We refer to it as the accelerated improvement plan, and that was just some minor tweaking to the dates on it, if you will, but the sum and substance of this year was through a lot of good work from the professional staff, we've been able to pull together our curriculum mapping and put that material, or that information into our documents that now, I understand, has been uploaded, and we will continue to work that to fine-tune it. So the work continues. As I originally said, this is anywhere from a three to five-year process. We can't expect miracles to happen overnight, but we're well on the way down the road for improvement and recovery, and we have a number of activities happening at the various levels throughout the district. So I'm pleased to say that that work will continue next year and should serve as the blueprint, blueprint for a number of years to come. Thank you, Dr. Malvey. Any questions for any members of the board in regards to that? Okay, next item on the agenda, FY '15 budget update. Dr. Malvey? Well, just some commentary on it. First of all, I want to thank the folks that did come out to vote, starting with the town meetings, and I thought there was a very positive vote at the Spencer Town Meeting and then eventually at the East Brookfield Town Meeting with respect to both issues that we had before the voters, and that was the operating budget at $24.1 million, and then a technology request for $632,000 because of, obviously, the glut that we've had in our technology issue here in the district. Unfortunately, on the Spencer side, going forward to the ballot election with an override vote needed on the operational budget and then a debt exclusion on the technology piece, we were not as successful. This evening, we are not prepared, Julie and I are not prepared to come forward with any hint of recommendations, but we certainly leave the door open for the wishes of the committee. I will say, as I've said right along, that if, if anyone is looking for reductions, then it sets the district further behind. It's no surprise with the amount of reductions that we made this year here, and certainly the instructional materials pretty well were depleted right from the start of the series of budget reductions, but more importantly, staff was reduced to a fare the well right up throughout the second half of the year where we continued to make further reductions on staff. So if there's any thought that that's where we're going to go, I'm going to give you kind of a precursor that that's further going to set us behind. Now, does that mean that it's impossible? Does it mean that we can't come up with some alternatives if the committee so requests it? We will shake it out as much as we can on the operational budget side. And then with respect to the technology issue, there just is no way around that, that we're trying to patch things here over the last few weeks, certainly through the, the positive moves of the school committee with freeing up some money from this year's operational budget. Once we hit the fourth quarter, we've been able to make some upgrades. We're moving forward on some purchasing of new equipment, but the, the bulk of that for the $632,000 does not disappear just because we had some infusion of money. But we will be prepared to address that, to come up with a viable plan to go forward of whether we're going to continue to make some incremental moves on that need for the overall technology. Keep in mind that we had well over 800 computers in the district, and in one fell swoop, that was pretty much wiped out, although our tech people identified 245 computers that were upgradable, and we've been working on those. We're not finished. It was a bigger project than what we anticipated, but we're also in the, the stage of purchasing new computers. We expect that we'll probably be in the 300 to 350 range, if everything goes according to Hoyle, if you will, over the next several months. That's still going to leave us a far cry from 800, our target goal, but we'll also go back and reassess that to see if we have no choice, what can we operate with at a number less than 800, if that's possible. And then certainly, you all know that from the menu that we put out to the committee and to the communities, we had well over $1 million, and I think it was around 1.2 million at one point and then 1.1 million. So this first stage of 632 really was the first stage. We would hope that if that went through, that next year, we can plan either to go forward with an additional capital request or build it into the operating budget. Now, having said that, we're also going to leave the door open at the wish of the committee that if we're able to go a little bit further on the request for the technology that we have in front of everyone, we'll also look at some scenarios of whether it's better to keep it as a separate article or to move it into the operating budget. We'll also look down the road to the extent we can to see, would we be in a position into next year at some point? I hope we wouldn't have to wait till the fourth quarter again, but would we be in a position somewhere next year that if we're able to recover some money, could we apply it toward the technology? So the issue and, and the difficulties that the professional staff and administratively, with all the reporting and record-keeping that we have to do to the Department of Education and other agencies, those things do not go away. And as you heard on some of the students at the town meeting speaking very, very eloquently on how their education was impacted, I believe it's priority number one in the district. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Malvey. Any comments from any board members or questions?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'm glad that the selectmen are still here so they can hear what I have to say right out of my mouth. East Brookfield got it right, and Leo, thank you and thank your community. You got it right. You supported education in the community, in the district. Spencer got it wrong. And I know some people think that they got it right, and they have saved $250 on the average house, you know, tax bill. average house tax bill. And that might be a thought. We got it right. Let's make the school district bleed. You know, we can continue this tug-of-war back and forth, pitting the towns against the schools. When I met with you, selectmen, I made suggestions that we do this as a community. And I was defeated. Don't do it as a community. We're not going to tie our wagons to the school. We all go down. Well, your override didn't pass, whether it's one vote or 1,000 votes, it really doesn't matter, whether it's our override, your override. Our job here isn't to figure out where the dollars are to come. Ms. Grant that spoke earlier hit the nail right on the head. And we don't agree on a lot of things, but we do agree on this. Our job here is to make certain that we provide an adequate, doesn't have to be the Cadillac, but an adequate education for our children in this district. And that district isn't just Spencer. It's Spencer and East Brookfield. And we're not doing that. We haven't done it for the past year. We're not going to do it again this year. This is just going to dig a bigger and bigger hole. I stood up at the town meeting last year, and I stated when I was asked, one question, is the budget that we proposed last year sustainable? And I stated, no, it wasn't sustainable. That budget didn't pass. That budget got negotiated down. And here we are again. We're in the same pickle jar that we were in last year. You know, we can't force people to increase their taxes. But you have to understand that after you cut a budget and you cut a budget and you cut a budget and you minimize access to whether it's books, whether it's supplies, whether it's worksheets, whatever the supplies that are required in a classroom, once you've gutted all that, there's nothing left to gut in a district. And if you don't have a school district, you don't have a community. It's part and parcel of the community. Whether the selectmen in the town of Spencer supported this or not publicly, it doesn't really matter. It doesn't really matter. The fate and the writing was on the wall. Because what was said behind the curtains is more important than what's said in front of the cameras. I'm one who's very willing and open to speak my mind publicly. And if I don't support something, I'll publicly tell people, I don't support it, and this is the reason why I don't support it. I won't sit on a fence. And I won't say, well, you know, geez, do we really need these 10-inch pencils? Can't we just break them in half and give each student half a pencil? Can't we do that? It's not right. It's not right what the community of Spencer is doing to the youth. Myself, Dr. Malvey, the selectmen, and all of the adults here have choices in life. You don't like your job, go find another job. Power to you. A 10-year-old is 10-year-old once. They get one bite at being 10. They get one bite at being 11. They get one bite at going through the educational process. It's our job to make sure that's the best process we can give them. And we're failing. The community's failing. We can talk all we want, and I'm always willing to compromise, and I'm willing to listen to new ideas. I'm certainly a proponent of change. The bottom line is, is that the only thing that's going to fix this problem is money. And if anyone thinks it's something other than money, let me know. Give me that golden egg. Because it's not there. It's not there. So I'm disappointed. And my disappointment, I don't want it to be misconstrued that it's directed solely at the Board of Selectmen, I'm disappointed with the voters of the community. Because ultimately, it is their decision. And for them not to see the need for the 1,800-plus students that we have in our district, if one parent, I said one and a half parents last year, if one parent would have taken the time and gone to the polls and supported this, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. We can only do, at this board level, what we can do with what we're given. And we'll provide the best education possible. But we're doing the children in this school district a huge disservice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cludier. Any other comments from any board members in regards to this issue?
I just have a couple of questions about the technology. What's the plan for increasing the number of wireless access points in the district? And have we considered the cost of tablets or laptops versus workstations instead? I'm just wondering what your position is on that, Dr. Malvey.
Right. That is really not a big part of this initial request. And I believe that that would be more apt to happen in the second stage. But we will have parts of it, but we can't do it on the existing equipment. We can't even run it to a fare thee well right now. We do have some pockets of it right now, but it just is not possible. So that didn't receive the major emphasis. It was primarily the workstations and servers and routers and, you know, things of that ilk. With respect to the second part of tablets, et cetera, we certainly kicked it around, but we felt that we needed to at least get back to as close, as close a level playing field of what the staff had been operating with and the students before we could venture off to that. Now, having said that, I'm expecting a major report coming out of a team of experts that we brought out over the past, I met with them last week, and I think they've been at it for about two weeks. But it's been folks that we're dealing with that have really the technical background beyond our skill set. But they have come out and did a thorough review, soup to nuts, if you will. And we've asked them to factor that in as well. What would it take if we gradually migrate toward what you just suggested? I would hope, I would hope, because it's the way of the future, I would hope that this district gets to the point, once we get close to a level playing field, one might say, well, gee, why don't you switch out now while you're going? I think that would turn the district topsy-turvy because people are used to running certain programs and certain, going to certain sites, if you will, given the technology that they had and where we're trying to go to. And certainly, the learning set from the students of what they had, we felt that if we tried to switch that out in one fell swoop, we probably would put people back six months to a year. Because it takes a tremendous amount of professional development for the adults, and then it takes a learning curve for the students, although they're pretty adept with, you know, their own personal devices. So we haven't ruled it out, but I think it's further down the line. And as we get this report, we'll be rolling it out to the school committee because there were several times throughout this process, the questions were coming from the public of what was the plan? And we came forward and told you there was a plan that went back to 2010, and no one did anything about it. So we're trying to breathe some life into that from, really, the experts, again, beyond our skill set, that can take it from point A to point Z. And that will include a lot of the cost factors, but also things such as the wiring. And then when you get, you know, into a lot of the, what we call the head-end panels, how much of that truly has to be upgraded? Or were we too robust in our estimates? So I think we'll be in a better position going down the road to get this thing up and running.
Does every building in the district have wireless access points within?
I don't think so. Is, I don't think, Steve Carroll, do you know if we have it? Does every building have access points?
Only office areas have access points.
Where?
Office areas.
Office areas.
But not classroom areas yet.
Okay. We have, we're a district that has not even been able to allow people to use their personal devices because we can't control it from the security and then, security end. And then obviously, when we ran into this XP situation, it just expanded our problems. So we're hoping we can get to that point. But what I'm saying as the precursor down the road, if you all, because I could be long gone by then, but if you all get to that level playing field, I think that will be the next wave because it's already happening in school districts. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say, if we get to that point, you're going to see a turnaround very, very quickly of the choice-out youngsters coming back in.
Yeah, that's exactly my point.
Good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier.
Through you to Dr. Malvey. Dr. Malvey, is that group of professionals that you're referring to, is that the technology committee?
No, 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 no. It's a private group.
Okay.
It's electrical engineers and obviously, the CDW group that we're dealing with that is on the state bid list.
Yep.
And a couple of other folks that do this, obviously, as a living, a living to go into a district and, you know, kind of scout it out of what you have to do from A to Z. And the good part about this, folks, is it's not costing us a dime. When we started to look at it based on the requests, we were up into the double-digit thousands of dollars and growing to have a private concern come in. Because folks just don't want to come in and help you out unless they know they're going to get the bid at the end of the day. And we couldn't guarantee that. But the folks that we do bring in now have offered to do it at no cost. And there's no guarantee that we're giving anything to them other than we're taking their expertise and using it for our betterment.
The reason I ask is because I'm sure other members have received phone calls from the general public, and everyone seems to have a better idea of, you know, how we should design the architecture of our computer system. And everyone thinks that, you know, they've got the market cornered, so to speak, on the way it should be designed. And a cheaper way, and there's always a cheaper way to do things, there certainly is. But is it cost-effective down the road? And I've told every one of them to, you know, contact you directly because I'm not the right person to be talking about that, that that's being handled through your office. And I'm just glad to see that we've moved from the technology group that actually published a pretty in-depth report of what our system currently has or doesn't have. And then we're moving it to a private vendor that certainly has, they have a lot to gain. They certainly, we have nothing to lose by utilizing them, though, to get their best estimates so that we'll be able to compare it. I want to make sure we do it right, that's all. And I know that certainly some of the work that we've already done is very, very basic-type work. And I know that that's, that's all well and good. But when we get into the more expensive ends, headends and whatnot, and the switches and the routers, I think we just need to do our due diligence. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, yes. I had a parent from Lake Street reach out to me. Their employer donates computers, up to 20 computers, to schools and other organizations. And there's some paperwork that would need to be filled out to start this process. But the parent inquired to me as far as where the computers would end up if they, if we did follow through with this, if they could end up at the school that their child is in.
Dr. Malvey?
Yeah, if it's going to come forward as a gift, and I don't know if it's the same one that has contacted us, Mike, but we've had some inquiries of people that said their company may be willing to do what you suggested. The way it works is that if it comes as a gift, we would hope that it is a gift. And by that, I mean it would be left up to the district to determine where the particular equipment, if you will, could be best used. But I certainly am not going to say no to someone if they come forward and they put a designation and say, gee, we would like it to go to XYZ facility. As a gift, that's okay. But ultimately, it's still our decision. And all gifts have to be either approved or not approved by the school committee. So I'm hoping that will not deter people to think that, that we would be so rigid to say, well, gee, it can't go into whatever, you know, the fifth-grade classroom in such-and-so school. I think we'd keep an open mind to that. On the other hand, if we had someone through their generosity come forward and, you know, reinstate our 800 computers, and then they start to tell us where they're going to go, I think differently about that. So I think we can be receptive to it, and I certainly would encourage it and ultimately put it forward as a recommendation, as the gift came forward, as a recommendation to the school committee. School committee is the final determiner of where they go, though.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? All right. Next item.
I'm sorry. I didn't get my hand up fast enough. Could I, I hate to take you off track, but.
Go ahead.
I'm just responding briefly to Mr. Cludier.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Cludier. And I don't want to leave this room, and I want anybody in this audience, anybody on this school committee to think, to feel, to feel they need to characterize or would characterize the select board as anti-education. That's simply, simply not the case. I mean, we are all concerned, both on the school and the town level, with downward spirals. Obviously, the more you invest, the less attractive it becomes for families and for commerce and all. What, all I've been trying to do with my words is to try and to say that we need to find a balance, that we invested some time last year in sitting down with the, you know, the select board and the school committee with ideas about how to make better use of the money. They were not all explored fully. I hope we could return to that at some point. In the end, we have to, we do have to look at where the money comes from and what the district can afford. And I look forward to, you know, continuing discussion on this. But for anyone to think that we're anti-education, that we're only thinking about the money, we have to look at the resources. We have to look at the big picture. I know your role to advocate for the kids, and you do a great job of that. I'm just looking for a balance that the whole, the town can live with as a member of the district. But I, you know, truly, this is nothing personal, and I take your, I do not take your comments. Personally, we have, we have different starting points and, you know, we, you know, guided by some, you know, by some, you know, some different missions. But I do think we could, we could find a way to balance this out and, you know, get ourselves the best district, best education we can. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if, I know you don't allow back and forth.
Yeah, it's okay.
If I might. It's not a personal issue with you or with any of the other folks. I mean, like I said, everyone's entitled to their vote. John, understand, $250 a year would have supported the town override, the school override, and the debt exclusion for a normal $200,000 home in this community. I don't think that's asking a lot. I don't think that's over the top. That's a cup of coffee a day. I just don't think it's a lot, John.
No, and I.
I think it's the right thing to do for this community.
And that's, the voters are left to decide.
Well, I think they did decide.
You know, it's, it's their, you know, they weigh it out, and we, you know, we live with it and go forward with that the best we can. That's, that's all. And I, you know, believe me, I mean, what I personally, you know, feel and what I'm prepared to, you know, give up as a taxpayer is often quite different from what I, you know, say as a, as a member of the select board, need to challenge and to make the most of our resources. I've taken enough of your time. I really appreciate it. Sorry for, you know, breaking your rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda. At our last meeting, I had reported to the boards of discussions that I had had in regards to our superintendent's search process. And I had spoken to a few organizations. And Glenn Kucha from MASC School Committee Association was one. And I reported back to you what my understanding of is what I thought that we could do. And in further discussions with Mr. Kucha, we were both thinking at different ends. I was thinking in regards, I was asking for the whole board to be involved in a screening process and misunderstood that that is not possible. It would have to be a subcommittee. And this decision is too important to get wrong right out of the chute here. So having been the guy that made the mistake, I got to take responsibility for that. I asked Mr. Kucha to come out here tonight and speak to the whole board so that you can ask questions and stuff that you may have of him. And I won't be the facilitator of bringing the information back and forth. And he'll explain to us what his organization can offer to us. And then we'll take that into consideration after we hear from our attorney and we have other discussions among the board. We'll then hopefully choose a process that will follow, to go forward. But I think we need to take a little bit of a breath, maybe trying to rush too much to get things done here. So I wanted to back up, have Glenn come out, let him make a presentation to us, and then all members will have an opportunity to ask questions. So having said that, Glenn, thank you for coming. If you'd come over to the mic and introduce yourself and your organization and tell us what you can offer to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, council. Nice to see you. MASC is in a position to assist you. And depending upon the kinds of assistance that you're looking for, a lot of this stuff can be done without any fees, without any charges. We assist a lot of districts in finding superintenances. And among the services that we can provide to you as a courtesy, we certainly have graphic design material ready to put a virtual. a virtual brochure ready for you, which actually can be adapted from the previous one you used, that's a service we provide to our member districts. We can post your vacancy, when you're ready to do so, online. We found that recently, districts have had great success with an online posting without paying for any newspaper advertising, especially with posting and listing on the websites of the School Committee Association and the Superintendents Association, and with the distribution list that we have available for nothing, you can reach a large universe of candidates. Most of the people looking for superintenances in Massachusetts and in Massachusetts from other parts of the country will go to the websites of your district, our association, and the Association of School Superintendents, which would also post your vacancy without fee because you're a member district. We also, as a courtesy, could, of course, we'd design an application for, a process for you if you'd like, and we could, as a courtesy, accept the applications for you, screen them, assess them, tier them, and present to you a set of recommendations for people whom you might wish to interview. Now, the law, I'm getting into shaky grounds here because my legal education comes from watching television and watching Law and Order, but the law itself, the open-meeting law, does allow for an initial screening committee to do an initial screening and interview of your candidates. The law does not, the law in the interpretation of the Attorney General who interprets the law does not permit the school committee, or for that matter, the Select Board, to act as its own initial screening committee. So in order to have a confidential process where people can apply and not expose themselves to some element of risk, sometimes a search agent will screen the applications for you and then present to you a list of people to interview. Sometimes the agent can contact the top-tier candidates and ask if they would be willing to conduct or participate in an initial interview in public. The school committee could then act as the initial screening panel, but only with the public purpose. In other words, you can act as an initial screening panel and an initial interview panel, but not by using the executive session process. And most of the better candidates will not apply for a superintendency unless they can do so with a minimum amount of risk until you get to the final stage. So what we would be in a position to do would be to accept your applications, recommend the people that we think you might want to speak to, contact them to make sure that they understand that this might be a public interview process, and then present that recommendation to you so that you could set up the interviews and invite people to come in and speak with you. We also have a, the capacity to assist you in developing questions for your superintendent candidates that would be appropriate to your district and that would be relevant, and we have a lot of resources in that regard. So in fact, you are in a position, and I know that this is a very difficult time for you fiscally, you are in a position to conduct a superintendent search that would really cast a wide net without spending a whole lot of money. In fact, you might not have to spend almost any money at all using the resources of our association, which are services that we provide to any member district, so it's not that we're doing anybody a favor, this is what you get. I'd be happy to respond to some of your questions, but I would just say, at the risk of making an offensive editorial assertion, not to anybody in the room, it was our understanding that the open-meeting law, as drafted by the legislature, was designed to allow a school committee to conduct a confidential initial screening and interview. The Attorney General has chosen to interpret it in a different way. We have urged the legislature to clarify what it means. We're so used to dealing with, in Massachusetts, we are so used to dealing with bureaucratic overreach and seizing control of the law, especially when you're dealing with the Department of Education, that we're very sensitive to it, but the Attorney General was the strictest interpreter of the open-meeting law when the Attorney General was the Middlesex County District Attorney. So these, this is not a new interpretation, this is an ongoing interpretation, but it's different from one that many district attorneys had before, but, and we've lost that battle at this time, so I just explain that while the law might seem to give you that ability, the Attorney General does not.
Thank you. Any members have any questions of Mr. Kuchar that you'd like to ask?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Cludier.
Hey, Glenn, how you doing? So, does your firm do any, do they do any recruiting? And let me explain what I mean by recruiting, I'm talking true headhunt of work. Do they look at a skill set that we establish, criteria for the district, and then go out and find that person?
Well, when you hire a search consultant, that's what you get. However, we're aware of pretty much all of the people who are looking for superintenances in Massachusetts, and we're aware of those people who may be of particular appropriateness for Spencer and East Brookfield, and we would reach out to them on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I can also, so that you know, you're competing with three or four other districts in central and southern Worcester County, all districts about the same size, all of whom are looking for a superintendent to take office between now and a year from, a year from June. Those candidates have emerged, and they have identified themselves, at least in confidence. So we have the capacity to reach out to them and say, are you interested in Spencer East Brookfield? We're also able to reach out to the people in our, the people with whom we have contact and the people who we know to say that, you know, are you interested in a superintendency like this? We would do that for you. We would do it, as I say, for any district, so...
Any other questions, Mr. Cludier?
I know, that's all.
Mr. Nodquist?
I just want to get back to ask one further question. You said you had some applicants. You got many applicants, to say, like, in a condition which we have financially? Has the pool shrunk, or has it stayed the same?
Well, the pools for superintendent candidates are nothing like what they were 20, 25 years ago. For a lot of reasons, a lot of people don't want to be a superintendent. It's, it's...
Think of any?
And I'm sure that a lot of us who, you know, I was first elected to my school committee 40 years ago. I've got a long-range back, there was a time when there was joy in the classroom, joy in the school, joy in the superintendency. This is before the bureaucrats and the regulators started torturing everybody.
Was there joy on the school committees back then?
Uh, there were. Well, for those of us with memories, we had something called an autonomous budget, and prior to 1980, whatever the school committee voted as its budget, the town had to come up with. So it was sort of a, and I'm not making this up, by the way, this is the way it really was. Your legal counsel was very active at that time as well. Since the advent of testing, 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 diagnostic accountabilities, rewrites of curriculum, reams and reams and reams and reams of regulations, your superintendent has 108 reporting requirements to the Department of Education. And I'm not convinced that any of that stuff gets read by anybody, but it keeps a lot of people employed. And couple that with the fact that the state's early retirement system encourages people to leave the system early, so the pool of people who might have worked until they were 65 and 70 are now retiring in their late 50s. So it's a difficult time. However, there are people, and not a small amount of people, who accept as a challenge the ability to go into a district that has real needs and help guide those districts out of that dilemma. So don't rule out the fact that there aren't some very able people who would accept the challenge of coming to this and any one of a number of other districts and try to lead them forward as you have been moving forward yourselves. Everyone's dealing with bad money, everybody's dealing with the budget crisis, and unfortunately, budget crises ruin everything, relationships, friendships, marriages, politics. So it's not an easy job to do, but there are people out there who are willing to accept the challenge, particularly since the district's administrative leadership has been, will be handed over in a stable position. You know, your district is in the right direction, headed in the right direction, and that makes, will make it very easy for the next superintendent to transition, despite the fact that the economy's not helpful and the regulatory climate is rancid.
Okay, thank you. Kurt, any further questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. King?
Hi, Glenn. About four years ago, we were sitting in the same position, and I, forgive me, I sometimes I've had time taking off my industry hat and putting on my school committee hat, but as a service provider, last year, the last time you were here, you pretty much gift-wrapped and handed us our last superintendent. And I just think, if I was a company and you were a vendor, I can't even believe you showed back up here, but I know it's different. I know it's, you know, apples and dump trucks, but how do you instill confidence in us that this next round of candidates, that there won't be another 1 percenter in there, that we just happen to, you know, come across?
You know, the last time you made a decision, the background checking, the reference checking, gave us a very different picture of what you were perceiving. All that information was shared with the school committee. Sometimes a hire just goes south, and I regret that very much. That's why we would sort of take the responsibility of trying to lead you back on the appropriate course. Now, you're not required to take any help from us at all, but I can tell you that we would be working diligently to try to do the best we could for you.
Thank you.
I want to be very careful about how I sort of phrase anybody or talk about the last process, but everybody was involved, there were site visits, there were people that people talked to, there were other candidates, and people made the selection that they made.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Kuchar?
I guess I have a question just about timeline, like, so can you spell that out? Like, how long would that first process take where you'd be able to give us a handful of candidates?
Well, for one thing, I'm going to leave with you a, some resource material, including something that talks about the decisions that boards need to do. Depending upon when you're looking to fill this position, in an expedited process where you don't get bogged down in process, but just try to get the job done, you could be in a position to offer the superintendency, if you wanted to work through the summer, you could be in the position to do something for the start of the school year. I'm not suggesting that, that that's something that we need to have a conversation with you about what your timeframe is. You can start and complete a superintendent search in a couple of months if people are willing to commit to the task. What bogs you down is when you get the candidates and you're ready to interview them, and somebody tells you, well, I can't be there before 7:00 PM, and I can't be there on weekends, and I've got something else on Monday night, and I've got something else on Thursday, and the next thing you know, you can't interview more than three or four people a week.
Okay. Is it, any other questions? Any other questions? Well, Glenn, I think we'll take whatever information you have that you'd like to...
And we'll talk offline about the timeframe and how you wish to proceed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to submit it to the, you have information?
Pass those out.
The Secretary would like, I can provide an electronic copy of that to attach to you.
That would be great.
Thank you, Glenn, and thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we also have our school council here, Attorney De Moskis, and he's going to share some information with us in regards to superintendent search process as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. De Moskis, the council for the School Committee and School District. I do concur with Mr. Kuchar, who is a long-term director of the School Committee Association, that the process to be followed does not allow the school committee to be the screening committee if you want to maintain confidentiality. And I want to emphasize this point of confidentiality, which he did refer to. My experience in this field of over 30 years is that candidates will not put their name forward if they're not going to be a finalist to be publicly revealed. So that if we want to get the best candidates possible, we have to have a process where their application will be confidential until the final stages. At that stage, they have to understand that the, it must be public and the school committee must go forward. So that, the, that is the law, and even though the Attorney General has been literal in the interpretation, still the statute also provides for that. Mr. Chairman, I think there are three key points that the committee has to decide tonight or soon. You have made the first determination that you are going to seek a permanent superintendent, and so the next determination is the form of the search. And that involves, I think, two alternatives. Either the committee would have a subcommittee of the school committee, which would have to be less than the quorum of the school committee, so you'd have to have a three-member subcommittee of members, or you would, the committee would form a search committee, which would be composed of, and this is generally the case, would be composed of members from the school committee and outside members, like a parent, a teacher, a businessperson, parents, people from both schools, both school, member towns, East Brookfield and Spencer. The key I would suggest to you is that the number should be kept small because committees, if they're big, they come unwieldy, and then, as Mr. Kuchar indicated, the process can be extended. So that usually, I suggest that you have not more than seven at the most for the screening committee. So that's the first decision the committee needs to determine. What will be the form of the search as far as the committee structure in connection with that search? The second question is, are you going to have an outside consultant to assist you in conducting that search? The question by the committee to the association was a key question. To get good candidates, you have to recruit them, because many of your good candidates are going to be working presently. So they're going to have to be convinced that this opportunity here in Spencer, East Brookfield, is a good one, and it will be a challenge that can be important for them in their career and in their public service. So that has to be decided, are you going to try to do it in-house, or you're going to have a consultant to go out to assist you? If you decide to have a consultant, and if there's going to be a fee paid, which would have to be, unless the Association of School Committees is going to do it without fee, but if there's a fee to be charged, then you have the bidding law that must be complied with, Chapter 38. with, Chapter 38. And so that, that will determine somewhat of the process of selecting the consultant. My experience, I believe you can get, the bidding law has been amended to permit not having sealed bids for expenditures of less than $25,000. The, I would think that you should be able to get a competent consultant for less than $25,000. So I think that you could use what they call best, best business practices, seek proposals from three firms, and the, and the basis of that, make a selection relative to the consultant if you decide to vote that.
Okay.
The third decision is that I recommend that the chair be designated as the point person in this process to be able to act for the committee on administrative basis, working with the support of the superintendent. There are administrative tasks to be done, and that the, and that the chair work with the superintendent to designate some person in the administration to provide the administrative, internal administrative support, and then if you weren't going to have a consultant, the external support necessary for the committee to act, because this is not your full-time job, and that you need to have someone present every day that can support the committee in, in between the meetings, and also to support if you decide to have a preliminary screening committee to act. So in summary, you've made a decision to seek a permanent superintendent, so you have, I think, three votes that you need to consider, and one is the, whether you set up a search committee, and if you do, the form of it, is there going to be a subcommittee, or is there going to be a separate committee, and what the membership would be, and I recommend that it be mixed with school committee members and with outside persons. Small in number, and that, that the, in addition, I recommend that the chair be authorized to designate the chairman of that search committee, so there's a, there's a close liaison of the school committee. And then third, that the committee designate the chairman as the spokesperson and the point person to handle the administrative tasks and be, work with the superintendent to support that, that process internally and externally. There is an additional item that, that needs to be discussed relative to a contract for the superintendent, but I ask that that be discussed in executive session. It would not be appropriate for a school committee to discuss the contract terms that they, which would be the guidance to the, the search process in public at this point.
If you just wait in case any questions...
Sure.
Does any members have any questions for Attorney Moscos?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, Angela.
I'm assuming that this committee setup would be if we hired a consultant and did not go through this process that we just, the previous Mr. Kucha was discussing, because his process stated that we had to, we would only step in when it became public, and that would be the entire committee, I'm assuming.
I'm not, you'd have, the committee then has to make a judgment whether they want to have this, if you decide to have the subcommittee or outs, a joint committee participate in the interviewing of the preliminary candidates. The, the standard is to have a preliminary screening committee and not have the, the consultant's role normally is to will down the number of candidates to those who are qualified and those who have the, the capacity to serve in a district like Spencer, East Brookfield, and then present those, maybe 10, 15 candidates to the screening committee, and with the consultant, to make a recommendation of three to five candidates to the school committee to do. So you, that's a judgment the school committee has to make, as whether they would want to skip the preliminary screening process there, and you have to be careful that that's not viewed as an attempt to bypass the open meeting law.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Angela?
Am I, am I confused you?
Sorry, I don't, that answered my question.
I'm sorry.
What my, I guess my, my concern is, is that there, he stated that if we do the screening preliminarily, members of this committee cannot be on that board if it's going to be confidential.
No, I think...
I'm confused, I guess that's...
No, I don't think, I'm not sure exactly what he said, but let me just, as your lawyer, you can have school committee members to be on a preliminary screening committee. What you cannot do, you cannot have a quorum of the school committee. So there are seven members, if I'm correctly in my math. So you cannot have more than three members of the school committee...
Clarifies the form, I think.
On this, either as a subcommittee or on this mixed committee.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If, did you have, if there's no other questions, and what's the pleasure of the board? If we want to move forward, do you want to have discussion now as to the board's pleasure to have a, a screening subcommittee that would be comprised of members of the board and administrators and people from the community and stuff? If you want to have that discussion now, we can at least get the show on the road here and take the votes that the attorney is recommending tonight. So I'll open that up to discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludia.
I'd like to start out by rescinding our vote from our last meeting, which we voted that this committee would act as a subcommittee in, in total. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
All right, and a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nordquist. Any further discussion?
Mr. King.
Mr. King, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Voted. Mr. Cludia.
So, Mr. Chairman, I spoke at our last meeting, and I spoke very clearly that I wanted to make certain that it ended up being a confidential process during the screening. And the purpose of, of our motion back then, obviously, was because of the information we had before us that evening, which has certainly changed in a few weeks. So the simple fact is, is I think we, we need to have a screening committee. I think members of this board have to act on that screening committee. But I, I'm concerned that if we're trying to do this and, and move this down the road, I'm concerned with opening this up to too large of a committee. I'm certainly willing to open it up to a seven-member committee, maybe a couple of members from the board, maybe a member from the administration, parent from each community, something along those lines, end up with seven people for a preliminary screening committee. Because I do want to keep it confidential. I think it's important. I think it adds to the credibility and, and the, probably the, the numbers that we'll receive in applications, when they know it's going to be kept confidential. I think if somebody thinks that the preliminary interview is going to be done in public forum, I think we're going to lose candidates. So I think we need to go down that road, and we need to set that committee up, and, you know, I, I don't have anything particular in mind, but I would like to see, there's, there's one person that I would like to see on the committee. I think we should think about a couple of members from the board, and, and I'm not sure, I haven't had any conversations, if our, our business administrator would be willing to serve on that committee, but I think that's important...
Yep.
As, as part of that administrat, administrative team, excuse me, moving forward, that there'd be somebody from the administrative team on that board, an initial screening committee. And I think she brings a valuable asset and set of credentials to that process from the financial side. So I would like to see Julie on that, on that committee.
Okay. I agree with that. Any other members have any suggestions? Mr. Nordquist.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be in favor of what Mr. Cludia says, that we have the, have the school committee do the interviews and have Julie on board. We've been down that road, we'd have the subcommittees, search committees, and it's a long-drawn-out affair, and it all comes back to the school committee at the end of the day to pick the candidates. So I think if we streamlined it, we don't have $25,000 to spend to have a, have a consultant come in here, so let's not fool ourselves. But we're going to make the call, so we got to stand to a plate and, and go forward with this. And I think Mr. Cludia had a good idea of having Julie on there, and I think that'd be great. If, if we want to put somebody else on there, I would...
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else have any input? All right, then, typically, the way this would, would go is the, the chair will make the appointments to that committee. Mr. Cludia suggested, and some have agreed, to have the business manager as one of the administrative members, and I would support that as well, so I think we could count on that. So that we can get a teacher or principal in. Would the feeling of the board be to have two members from the school committee or three members? If we have, if we're going to keep it to seven, we want a parent from East Brookfield, a parent from Spencer, Julie is three. Two members make five, and then we are looking for two other people, either an administrative or a teacher, or do we want to have another school committee member, have it be a three-member school committee board? What's the pleasure of the board? Because my next question will be, who wants to serve? And I'll take your names, and I'll appoint a committee from there, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not really overly concerned at who serves on that committee. I, I think that you can certainly pick the, the right group of people. I, I would ask some of the newer members of the board to consider throwing their hat in the ring. It's, it's a preliminary screening committee. It's, it's something that we need to weed out, to bring the finalists back to this board, and then at that time, certainly, every member of this board will have their opportunity to ask the questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have served on several search committees and other boards I've run, so I would definitely be interested in joining.
Great, okay. Any other members that are interested?
I would like to serve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nordquist?
Yes.
Anyone else? Would it be agreeable with the board as far as other administrators? I could, the chair could approach administrators and make a selection. As far as the, the parents go, I would like to leave that open to suggestions from board members. If you want to contact me in the next few days and give me suggestions of any people that you would like to put their names forward, and then I will proceed to, to try to pick out of that pool if that's agreeable. Okay? The next issue that council is suggesting that we, we tackle is outside consultant.
Chairman, I would feel more comfortable as a lawyer that there be a vote of the committee to authorize, to establish a, a search, preliminary search committee of not, seven members in the process, nominated by the chair to the committee for approval.
All right. The chair would entertain such a motion?
Oh, moved.
So moved by, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Voted. So the next issue would be, do we want to hire an outside consultant? Do we want to entertain Mr. Kucha's firm? It, it looks like a limited expense. Or do we want to talk about an outside firm? What's the pleasure of the board, or any discussion in regards to that?
I think that if we had an extra $25,000, that should go into technology, not into a consultant, when we can get the services for free.
Okay.
At least in this first round. I mean, if we find that it's inadequate, we can always come back to this drawing board and, and, you know, consider hiring someone at that time.
Yeah. Anyone else with any comments or thoughts?
Chairman, I think we need to...
I just want to make a point. We need to clarify that point, because if there is going to be a fee, then you'll have to go through the bid process.
Right.
If, I'm not clear, and I may not have heard correctly, I'm not clear as to whether they're offering the services for free...
No.
Or they're not offering the services free. If there's some part of the bucket is free and some is not. So I think the chair needs to have a discussion with Mr. Kucha to, to define that specifically so that then I can advise you of whether you'll have to go through the bid process. Like I said, the costs of the bid, of the search should definitely be less than $25,000. So it could be done on the best practices basis, not based on a sealed bid process.
Yep. My initial discussions with him is, he has given a figure somewhere around $7,500 and possibly less, depending on how much of a role we have them play.
Well, then, if that's the case, then you will, my recommendation is that you seek out two other persons, if the committee votes to have this consultant, two other companies, and ask them to, to, based upon the services that they, that is expected to be provided, to give you a bid, and then the, you'll be, come back to the school committee for their approval.
All right. So what would be the pleasure of the board? Mr. Cludia?
Mr. Chairman, so I, I do understand that, that, you know, free or limited expense sounds, sounds real good, and, but there's also an adage, you get what you pay for. I don't have a problem utilizing Mass School Committee Association in the first round, if that's what we want to do. But I'll tell you, there's a value to this board deciding what skill sets we're looking for in our next superintendent and chief administrator of this district, and, and putting that together, and there is a value to hiring a recruiter. And that value is, is that person's not going to put it on, help me out, is it called school spring? Is that the, it's not going to be put on school spring. That headhunter is going to go out, and he's going to find that person who's working somewhere, either in a college, or, or, you know, it could be a high school, it could be with the proper credentials, and they're going to go out and search for the person with the skill set that we have, and they're going to, they're going to try to attract them to the town of Spencer. It's a different process.
Right.
And anyone who's done any hiring, you know, knows that you can get it both ways. You can run an ad on Craigslist, you can put an ad in the newspaper, or you can hire a headhunter to go out and, and find you the talent. I don't know that the success rate is, is any better either way. I just know that there's a certain set of skills that we require for this position, that, at least that I want to see in this position. And, and I want to make sure that we don't try to stick a square peg in a round hole because it's free.
Right.
And, and that's all. But I don't have a problem with this going down a process. I really don't want to belabor this. I don't want to do process after process after process. But if we can save a few dollars, I don't really have a problem, you know, doing the same thing that I'm talking about, designing what we want or, or outlining what we want for a set of skill set for this position, and giving it to, you know, Mass School Committee Association to, to work with us.
Okay. I, I agree with everything that Mr. Cludia stated. I, I don't, I just don't want someone that's going to be recycled, that's part of this group, and if that means we have to spend some money to go out and get somebody to actually recruit the person that we need here. I think with what the district has been through the last couple of years, this is too important of an issue to worry about what the costs are going to be at this point. I think if we get this wrong, we're in deep trouble for a long time after this. I mean, we're trying to rebuild credibility here. I think, as Vinnie suggested, we could come up with, as a board, with a skill set and the type of characteristics we want someone to have, and give that to the School Committee Association, and see whether they can come up with those type of candidates. And then if not, maybe we will need to go out and hire a professional headhunting firm to get it done. But maybe we can, you know, go the, the first route and see if they can accomplish what we need them to do for us. Chris?
Not to beat a dead horse, but it was free last time, and it was $7,500. It was free this time, and it's $7,500. So it's 15 grand, and we got really nothing for that last time. I would look at the $25,000 for a headhunter as an investment versus a cost, but it's up to the board's pleasure whether they want to entertain a first round of MASC, but I just don't have faith in that...
Okay.
...you know, organization after last time, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Chris. Chris, you were involved in it last time. Did they get a bid... get a bid on a headhunter? Do you know?
I don't believe we did.
No.
Through the chair to Dee.
Counselor.
Do you have any idea on the cost of headhunters for this type of position, through your experience?
Yes. They run generally around $20,000. A little bit, it gets over, it can get less. It depends on the amount of recruiting you're gonna ask them to do, and the amount of administrative services you have to do. And then, you do have the association, it tends to be a price that's more competitive than the private companies.
Can we get bids and lists of services that are gonna be provided before we kind of continue to beat this around? Because I, we can't really make an informed decision until we know what we're talking about in terms of numbers and qualifications and everything. Because I'm definitely, I mean, if we, for $10,000 or more, we can get professionals saying, this is what you want, and I'm gonna get it. I'm okay with that. But if it's, you know, 20,000, 30,000, you know, I'd want to know before we kind of move forward with that.
Yeah. The chair just needs some direction as to what's the flavor of the board in order for me to proceed. You know, so, it's up to members to-
Well, I think-
-a motion, and we'll take a vote, and-
Mr. Chairman, I think regardless of what way we go, we still have work cut out for ourselves. And I think those first few steps are the same, whether we hire, you know, Mass School Association, or we go out and hire a recruiter. We need to decide what we're looking for in our next superintendent. And, you know, I'm not sure what process you would like to follow. But, I mean, I think that if each member was able to draft up a one-page scenario, or a 10-page scenario, whatever it is, and get it off to you-
Yep.
-as the chair, let you formulate it, maybe get some staff through the superintendent's office to help us. And at the same time, let's contact some recruiters, and let's find out what their costs are. And for that, what do we get? Exactly what Angela suggested. And also, I guess, we should ask the Mass Association of School Committees what the, to put in writing, I would appreciate it if we could get that in writing, of what they're gonna do for us gratis. Because I took notes that the graphic design work would be gratis, the host of the online ad would be gratis, the design and application they could do for us, they could screen and assess and tier them. You know, all these types of things, they were, he was saying, geez, I think we could do that for you as a member. So, if that's the case, maybe we can blend the two processes to save money on the recruitment end. Because those things need to be done regardless. Now, you won't be screening and, you know, assessing and tiering candidates. Obviously, if we hire a recruiter, they'll be doing that.
Right.
But I think in the end, we're looking for, you know, as large a group of qualified candidates as possible to go to that initial screening committee. Based on the group, I think, that we get in probably decides what we want to see here in a public meeting for final candidates to view in public. That would just be my thought.
I guess maybe the first, the next item of water then should be a motion, a vote from the board to appoint the chair, designate the chair as the point person. And if that's the way the flavor of the board is, then I will take suggestions from members for the next five to seven days, if you can submit to me in writing what your thoughts are and stuff. And in the meantime as well, we'll get some ideas of cost from headhunters and in writing as well from association. And then, we can make a decision with all of that, if that sounds reasonable.
So moved.
Okay. So, we need a motion to designate the chair as the point person?
So moved.
Second. By Kurt. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 So, if everyone could yet, I have the names of people interested in serving, and if you can give me your thoughts, and get them over to me in the next five or seven days, we can go forward, okay? We covered everything there, Dee, as far as legal-
The only question is, I do think, and I think it's on the agenda, that there should be an executive session on contract issues for the new superintendent.
Yep. We'll be going to that, yep. All right. Next item on the agenda is Budget Subcommittee. It had been requested to the chair by some members that we should consider appointing a budget subcommittee. I made it clear when I came on the board that I didn't believe in subcommittees, and I thought that the whole board should be involved and be sitting at the table to make decisions and stuff. But in light of what has happened with the vote in the past election, we've got 30 days to get a budget together, and to get something back down to the town fathers, and to do whatever we can try to do to help this process along, so that we don't end up in that gym again in December. So, I bring that out to the board for discussion. I'm hoping that there would be support to maybe have a two-person subcommittee, that this work would be done during the day while the superintendent and the business manager is available. And that subcommittee would work with them to put together a budget that would be brought back to the full board, to be voted on and to be opened up to suggestions as to what we come up with from there. As opposed to not having a subcommittee, then we're gonna have to have more meetings. And we're gonna be here doing this at the table. And I think it might be more efficient and more beneficial if we were to have a subcommittee. But that's my thoughts. I open it up to suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, after my comments regarding the ballot questions and whatnot in the town of Spencer, I do think that this is kind of important. You know, we've discussed, we've kept a very open agenda. We've discussed everything we've had to discuss with this district in open session. And every time we throw out a new idea, you know, instead of people really getting around the idea and letting it sink in, because we're doing it publicly, and it's a surprise to people, instead of, you know, embracing it, thinking about it, how can we make this work? Well, is this a good idea? It's a change, but is it a good idea? You know, all of a sudden, the red flags go up right away. You know, so, there's no use to try to do it in public session. I think a budget subcommittee for this short period of time, I'll support it. Again, I wanted to do everything in public, but it just throws up too many red flags. There's too many obstacles that are thrown in your way. Instead of people trying to help you get from A to Z, we throw a bunch of obstacles in the way, so you can't get there. So, I think we need to do this in a subcommittee format over the next week or so, because I believe at our next meeting, which is June 10th, we're gonna have to vote this budget to go back downtown. The town of East Brookfield has already approved our budget, and they have no further work to take on this, no action to take on this. But certainly, the town of Spencer's gonna have action to take on it. So, I would suggest that we get a budget subcommittee of a couple members of this board to work with the superintendent and Julie, and report back to the board, and report back to the board in full of everything that was discussed. I have no problem doing that. I just want to make certain that, you know, we do our due diligence, we go back, the voters did speak, they spoke loudly, and we do need to at least take the time and effort to go back and do our due diligence again, and see if there's any way that we can look at this a little differently, maybe change the way we set, the course that we set for this upcoming year, whatever the case might be, and move forward with a budget, so that this whole board can vote on it at our next meeting.
Any thoughts or comments, suggestions from any other members?
Well, you said during the day, exactly what time of the day?
Well, it's gonna be during the day when the administration is working. So, I would say, you know, probably before four o'clock, yeah. I mean, they have a lot on their plate at this-
Right, right. Because I'd be interested in serving, but it's hard. I'm a school teacher also, so.
Yep.
I'm out by 2:30, but other than that, I'm-
Yeah. All right. What is, is the idea in principle agreeable to the board, to have a two-person subcommittee to work with the superintendent and the business manager?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Cludier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. All right. Next question, who wants to serve? And the chair will take it under advisement and make an appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to serve on that committee.
Okay, Mr. Cludier?
I'll serve on the committee also, if you can take into account that I'm a teacher.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Cludier, Mr. Messier. Anyone else? Okay. All right then, we'll move on to the, next item was discussion of ballot questions. We pretty much have touched on that in previous comments. But to echo what Mr. Cludier just said, I think- Question. Was it, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Martha. In addition to what Mr. Cludier said, you know, he was very elegant about the fact that we are here, and we are advocating for the kids, and we are supporting education, and we are, we do intend to do everything that we can do. Having said that, the sticky point of the democratic process is, things get put out for people to vote on, and then unfortunately, you have to adhere to what the voters say. And I think it would serve no purpose whatsoever at this point if the board was to take what voters just rejected and send it back down to the town of Spencer. Because all we're gonna do is ensure that we're gonna be back in that gymnasium in December, having a budget set by the state. So, I think the state statute requires us anyways to go back and to do some thought into restructuring this budget before we can get to the next step. And I think we need to do that and identify those things. And if we can come up with some areas that we can show the residents of the communities, that we can do some consolidations and look at maybe some different ways of doing some of the things that we're doing. I think we have to do that in order to try to build some credibility. We're, you didn't have the problem in East Brookfield, but we have a big problem here in Spencer. And as Mr. Cludier said, parents themselves didn't come out to support this. And I don't think it's our place to sit here and say, well, they just don't have the facts, they don't understand. I'm starting to think, maybe they do understand, and they're thinking, we don't understand. They don't want to pay. And they're telling us they don't have the money. And we've somehow got to find a way to not re-educate them, but be able to make them see what we need for the kids in order to move forward and to give the type of education that we want to give. I watched the other night, Ray Martinez, a graduate of David Proudie from 1992, was inducted into the Alumni Association as a distinguished member. And I listened to what he had to say, and the things that he had to say about the school district, and the mentors that he had as he went through the school district, and the type of person that made him be. And he started out his own company, and reached $100,000 of credit card debt, and thought it was gonna be failure. And it was support from people that he had interaction with throughout his school years in this district, that continued to encourage him. And he's now raised some 26 or 28 million dollars, and is serving over 7,000 school districts with online school programs for free, the school districts. I'm not sure that, and I'm embarrassed to say, I'm not sure that we have kids that would believe in here this year, that could tell us that they had that same experience. I hope that we would. But I think in a lot of areas, the kids are getting shot changed. And we've got to do a better job. I think we did a miserable job of trying to put out there publicly what had to be put out there in regards to the budget. And I think we have to do a better job of it. And until we do that, and until we can convince people, we're gonna be coming here year after year, saying they don't understand, but we're gonna continue to cut the budgets. So, I think we have to go back, we've got to take a hard look. The subcommittee will bring it back, and then everybody will vote. And everybody will have an opportunity to have their say. And as you all know, it will take five votes to change that number. But I think not to go through that process, and at least be open-minded to look at it, will just set this district further back. And we're trying to move it forward. So, I think we all have to be open-minded, and let's look at the cards that are on the table, see what we can do, while keeping the interest of the kids at heart, and come forward with a budget to bring forward to the towns. We got to do that within 30 days. Mr. Nodkis?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify of what you said. The two questions for the schools got shot down. And if what, I get some phone calls, like Mr. Cludier, I don't know if he gets the same calls, but I get some calls from people saying, if we give it to you now, you're gonna be back next year and the year after. And I'm not gonna stand up and do that. There's a lot of people are struggling, and like the town, and I have to differ from Mr. Cludier away, the town made their cuts on what was voted. We're gonna cut people's this and that, and they did that. If we do absolutely nothing, like Mr. Hayes says, we're gonna be back here again with a no vote, and a no vote in December. And if the state comes in, when they do come in, if they say that we're not gonna take any more from the towns, we're gonna be back to square one. So, we gotta try to find some money somewhere, make an attempt to do anything, do something. By doing nothing, we're not gonna get anywhere. So, I don't want to fool people here tonight, and I just want to tell like it is to people out in TV land, that if we don't do nothing, we're gonna get nothing. So, and there's a lot of people out there that are hurt. And that's what it is. So, I can clarify what Mr. Hayes says. We have to do something.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, next item on the agenda, fingerprint and policy, first reading. Dr. Melby?
This is just a follow-up. A few months ago, I think, we notified you that there's a new requirement in the Commonwealth. And the committee, I believe, voted to approve it to go forward, and we are implementing it. But this is basically a boilerplate policy that the state has put out. And Martha has been in contact with folks, you know, in fellow districts there to come up with this. But it is really something that the state has put out. It's kind of pro-former. If the committee isn't ready to vote on it, then you can take it, and we can bring it back at the next session, as long as we're making progress toward it. But we've already implemented it. The new hires, and eventually down the road, it will be a requirement for all employees. But the first rollout is for new hires this year and going forward.
Have the new members had an opportunity to read this? If you did, we can dispose of this tonight with a vote to move on. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman-
Mr. Nodkis.
I'm gonna make that motion to approve this as the first reading. So, we still got time to go back and do any more checking on it. So, I'll make that motion on the first reading. Be approved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Heather. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item on the agenda, Connecticut trip request, Knox Trail.
Hello. Grade six students are requesting permission to travel to the dinosaur state park in Rocky Hill, Connecticut. The museum is one of the largest dinosaur track sites in North America. Surrounding the exhibit centers are more than two miles of nature trails containing more than 250 species of plant families, which appeared during the age of dinosaurs. The museum presents a bird's eye view of the preserved floodplain covered with tracks, dioramas of Triassic and Jurassic environments, collections of fossils, and interactive exhibits. So, sixth grade would like to go to the dinosaur museum.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions from any of the members?
I have a quick question.
Sure, Angela.
I have sat in the audience and questioned this. Why doesn't the principal have the ability to give permission for these trips? Why do they have to bring them to us? Is that like a law?
Well, it's only because it, oh, sorry, out-of-state field trips, we need to get permission.
Thank you.
And this is Connecticut.
Thank you.
I think. Is that right, Martha?
Does the policy get any overnight, or out of state, have to give them?
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Nodkis?
This is all paid for by student raiser money, is that correct?
Students contribute half, and then through fundraising, the other half was taken care of. Also, any student that cannot afford a field trip, we cover that cost through fundraising.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion to approve?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman, as stated.
Motion made. Seconded?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Southern Worcester County Educational Corrobative Agreement. You have that in your packet. It's just informational purposes only. There's something for the chair to sign. Remind me to sign that tonight before I leave.
I believe you need to vote on it too, so that it authorizes the signing of the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Personnel information, you have in your packet, some personnel changes. Anybody have any questions on those? Okay. That doesn't require voters, informational. You also have your enrollments, breakdown for all the schools. Any questions on any of those? In your packet, you also have your school newsletters. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nodkis?
I just want to say, the group of Yar Village, this is an outstanding newsletter. Every page is colored, and it goes into what's happened. I think it's an outstanding job well done, the principals and teachers at the school. So, I say thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else? No. Next, hearing for visitors. Anybody want to be heard on that thing? No? Okay.
There's somebody.
Yep.
Good evening, welcome new members. I'm Danielle Gibo, Brown Street in Spencer. I am here tonight as a voice for some members of this community that are parents, taxpayers, and concerned residents. Most of us have been following the goings-on with this district for over a year now, and we're not impressed with some of the choices, decisions, and secrecy that you, Board, that you as a Board have shown us. Maybe you feel that as a Board, you're not obligated to answer our questions or concerns as residents, but we feel it's time you gain back our trust so we can move forward in this town. The following are questions that residents are asking to be answered. Dr. Malvey stated that he was going to have $155,000 to put towards, a step towards the technology upgrade. Why not out of good faith? Is this not being applied to next year's assessment to the towns? My second question, Dr. Malvey, we know that there have been people willing to volunteer their knowledge of IT and help with replacement, repair, and upgrade of our technology, but there has been little or no response from you as a Superintendent, why you are reaching, why you are not reaching for help from people who are willing to help? And the third question, according to the DSAC report, we need to keep stability in the administration in this district. By not renewing Principals Zablocki and Principal O'Brien's contracts, you are going against the DSAC report and bringing us backwards as a district. We do not want or need any more interim positions in this district, we want stability. Thank you.
You can, you can.
No, I'm not going to be sure.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard? Next item on the agenda, School Committee Comments. Any agenda topics that any members would like to have on? Mr. Nagquist?
Chairman, I have two questions. First of all, I would ask the School Treasurer to come back and report the next month on the funds, like the PALS account, the high school parking fee, parking fees accounts, and what's the balances and what's been spent, so we have an idea of what's in what and what's going on through the Treasurer. And the second thing is, it's to Julie, I asked this question before, and I know you're busy, but on this wire, real electrical problem, I brought this up, and I'll continue to bring it until we get an answer here, but I did talk to you in your office, and you said that you don't know where to go for looking, so I did some checking, and I would say that if we start without electrician and ask him for any ideas, and if not, maybe we could get some outside contractor to come in and give us the price of what they're going to do, and find out why we're spending more money in this school for electricity than the other school. We can save some money here, and we're all about saving money and solving a problem by, we just have to tackle that, and I'm just asking Julie to take that forward and see what she can do for us.
Thank you.
All right, next issue will be executive session for the Board to go in to discuss strategy with respect to collective fighting and litigation, and to discuss the new Superintendent contract.
Mr. Chairman, before we conclude, I just want to take a moment, if that's okay with you, just to say thank you to Mary Gershman and Josh Kotay for their three years of service and for supporting the education of the children in this district.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Seconded.
On a roll call vote, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Nagquist.
Aye.
Mr. Cludia.
Aye.
Mr. Heathia.
Aye.
Ms. Napton.
Aye.
Ms. Messier.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, we'll reconvene only for the purpose of adjournment.